Welcome to the
Recording in progress.
June 5th, meeting of the Eastham Select Board. This meeting will be video recorded and broadcast over local access channel 18 and through the town website at www.eastham-ma.gov. Before we get started, is there anyone on the Select Board that's got any information that would like to provide?
I think so. Go ahead, Art.
This week, the Historic Commission awarded the Abbott Award to 195 Locust Road. The Abbott Award is a award that's given out periodically for historic preservation. So it was presented this week to the OTS. The name of the house, the original name of the house is the Atwood Knowles House. The oldest section of it was built in 1672, and that was moved here in 1855 from Plymouth.
Oh, wow.
Okay. The north section of the house was built in 1823. So they moved the one from Plymouth and attached it to the house that was there.
That's cool.
1823. So we did present the award, got to make the OTS, they were very nice. They're bound and determined to maintain the house as a historic house. They said they put something in their will to let the kids, they can't do anything but maintain it.
That is awesome.
So anyway, that's all I had.
Oh, that's awesome.
Does anybody else have anything? No? That didn't help much. Okay, why don't we get started? First thing we have is our District Attorney, Kevin Gallaboyes. Did I say that right?
Gallaboyes, yes.
Yeah, because I got a name that nobody could pronounce, and I looked at your name and I couldn't figure it out either. So Kevin Gallaboyes, before he gets started, Adam Bohannon, who is our Chief of Police, just was unable to attend tonight. But he wanted to make sure to convey to the board and to the public that the relationship and communication between the new DA and the Police Department has been outstanding.
Oh.
He says, you guys are doing a great job, answer any questions, do whatever you need, so thank you very much for that.
I'm done. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just for the record, my name is Rob Gallaboyes, the first name, not Kevin, but it's Rob Gallaboyes.
Sorry, Rob.
Nope, that's okay. First of all, thank you for allowing me to come in to speak for a few minutes. I just wanted to provide a little bit of an update with what's going on in my office. Today is officially five months and one day, so we're quite excited over on Main Street Barnstable and our satellite offices as well. As many of you may already know, on January 4th, when I took office, the very first thing I did was I swore in Jessica Alumba to be our first Assistant District Attorney. For those of you that might be a little bit unfamiliar with how the office is set up, the first assistant is essentially the top prosecutor in the office. They're in charge of the entire caseload and they basically run the office. Jess arrives to us after about a quarter of a century, approximately 25 years, working as a prosecutor in the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office, Bristol County District Attorney's Office, and Attorney General's Office. She's handled the most serious cases that come before the court, those of course would be first degree murder cases. I think she's done about 15, excuse me, of those to date. When I appointed her on January 4th to be the first assistant, we set a record. She's the first woman in the history of the Cape and Islands District Attorney's Office to hold that position. And our office has been in existence for about 50 years. So from jump is a very proud moment for me and for our office as a whole. Under Jess's leadership, she established what's called vertical prosecution. What that is, is when someone comes into court for an arraignment, that's the initial appearance. A prosecutor is assigned to that case right away and stays with that particular case all throughout the system, through the pre-trial stage, motion, disposition, or trial stage. So as you might imagine, in our cases where we have victims, they know from the very beginning which prosecutor is going to have their case and stay with their case. And it's also beneficial to our law enforcement partners as well, so they know from the very outset who they have to go to with the particular case that they brought to the courthouse. Again, also under Jess's leadership, she created a first in the office, an unsolved homicide unit. When I assumed office on January 4th, we had nine unsolved homicides across the Cape and the Islands. Within the first week, we had a team of detectives come in to share some files with us, and inside of two months, we charged two people with first degree murder for a case dating back to 2011. I wish I could speak more about these unsolved murders, but I can let you know that we're actively working another one right now, and we hope to have an announcement within the next couple of months. As I was leading up to taking office during that transition period between the election and the swearing in, I had a chance to meet with the Cape Police Chiefs and the Islands as well. I have 22 police chiefs in my district, and to date, I can say I've now met with each police chief in their office to ask them two basic questions. What did you like about the prior administration that you'd like to see our office continue? And what's something you'd like to change and try something a little bit differently? And I had a chance to meet with your police chief in his office during that transition period. I was very grateful that he allowed me the time to come in. We spoke for about an hour, and it was very nice of him to say nice words to the board. I didn't know that was coming, so thank you, Chief, again, for saying that. Another first for the office is we have a grant writing department. We did not have a grant writing department before my administration. We are focusing on two areas, the opioid crisis, of course, but also human trafficking. Human trafficking is starting to gain more traction, if you will, the efforts to combat it, if you will. And there are a lot of opportunities out there in terms of grants to try to get prosecutors onboard to fight human trafficking, and we are working on that as we speak as well. We've also created a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. It's being led by Angelé Scott Price. She is the Vice Chair of the Select Board in the Town of Falmouth. And we also have on our committee Jean Morrison, who is the President of the Legal Women Voters, and Tara Vargas Wallace, who is the founder and CEO of Amplify POC. And I'd like to take a moment, if I could, Mr. Chair, to the audience, certainly here yourselves and those that may be listening and watching on Zoom or at home. We are actively recruiting for our DEI committee. Later on this month, it's our hope to have an organizational meeting. So if anyone is interested in joining our committee, I invite them to please contact our office, and we will be back in touch and let you know when we're going to have that organizational meeting. We are beginning to collect data in our office, this is also a first. When I say collect data, we're noting the age, gender, race, ethnicity, the charges, and whether someone's held on bail or not. And our hope is certainly at the end of this year to be able to put together an annual report to produce that data. It's not only going to be for internal reasons, we want to share it with all of you, so you'll be able to take a look at it, scrutinize it, and report back to us how you think we're doing and how we can perhaps improve. And I will wrap up by saying this. Over the course of my campaign, leading up to this, I would say the single largest platform issue was my conversations about a mental health court. Where a mental health court, what it does is professionals in the field come right into the courtroom, and they work with the struggling defendant before the court. And they try to identify the core issue as to why this person is grappling with whatever that they're grappling with. And when you can make that identification, you of course can try to treat it. And by treating it, you reduce recidivism, therefore making us all safer. I talked a lot about how these mental health court sessions existed across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, except the Cape and the Islands. I am less than six months into my first term, first year of first term. And I can let you know that Judge Julian, the presiding judge in Barnstable, announced about two weeks ago that we are in fact going to be getting a mental health court, and it looks like it's going to be up and running before the end of the summer. And while it will be based out of Barnstable, cases that normally go to Orleans or Falmouth can be transferred to the Barnstable Court. So we are quite excited to have this specialty court coming up in the very near future. Thank you for the time, I really appreciate it.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Thank you, yes, thank you very much, that was well said and it was easy to follow, so thank you for being here to kind of give us a rundown on everything.
Thank you for the chance.
You mentioned about tapping into the concepts of grants for human trafficking, and I guess what are the implications that you see with something like that on Cape Cod? What's the need for attention to that type of issue?
I've gone to a few different presentations now on human trafficking locally and both up at the U.S. Attorney's Office. It's frightening. I can fairly much guarantee, I don't know where anyone here lives, but you drove past a victim coming here. It's that prevalent. So it's very eye-opening, a lot of people don't understand just how prevalent it is. And we are going to try to bring a lot of awareness to it and also try to fight it, if you will. There was just a case last week in Truro. I'll be making some headlines probably in the near future because we've been doing some more investigation into it. But just last week, kind of fortuitously, honestly, we came upon something where there was some human trafficking going on of some minors. But I can't express it enough, on your way home, you either coming here or going back, you would have passed a victim. It's that prevalent.
Thank you.
Suzanne, you have a question?
I was wondering if you were using a particular software for collecting and storing the data that you talked about?
So I wish I had the budget to get the type of software that we like. If my staff could be listening to this right now. We have a database, it's referred to as Damian, and I can't even really tell you what all the letters stand for, but it's a database that goes back to right around the year 2000. And it was outdated from the outset, is my understanding. So what we are doing is we're taking whatever fields are available in this Damian software or database and using it for our own particular needs. The key, of course, is going to be consistency and how the data is entered by our administration staff. We've had some trainings. We launched the data collection on May 1st, so we're in, you know, one month into it, if you will. We hope to have a little bit of a report produced by the end of this week, so I can see, how did our first month go? And then we'll do it again in the very beginning of July to see if our improvements work through June. And really, the hope is from July 1 to December 31st, we can produce some sort of data collection that is digestible and understandable. But, so the database is really, it's not congruent with our wishes or desires, but we're trying to make it work as best we can. My hands are kind of tied to the legislature at the moment in terms of funding.
Chair, do you have a question?
No, thank you for giving us your time.
Oh, I appreciate the invitation, I truly do.
Yeah, I just want to welcome you and say thank you for, you know, shaking things up, as you can. We had the privilege of, just what, last week, the sheriff, the new sheriff was here.
Oh, Donna came by, okay.
Yeah, she came by for our Memorial Day
Excellent.
service at our museum.
We have a very good working relationship and personal.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yes, well, with your permission, I'd like to be able to come back in about six months with another update, if that's okay.
Have me back.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Let me apologize one more time for screwing up your name, Rob.
That's okay, that's all right.
If there's anything that we can do to help you, any information you need, any kind of resource we can provide, please let us know.
Mr. Chair, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to Roberta Longley. She's going to do, she's going to give us an update on the Climate Change Committee.
Hello, I have a PowerPoint that I am going to pull up on my computer. And let's see, do you have it? Uh-oh. Find out how to
You're going to probably have to send it to Kayla.
Or? Really?
Well, we don't know. Yeah, you can't do it from yours, I don't think, but
I thought he set her up so she could.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, she was a participant.
Oh, to share?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there we go.
I got something. I think we just had it.
Oh, okay.
There it is.
All right. Just talk, well, what matters is what you guys see, right? She has a bunch of news. Right? Okay.
Right on.
All right, we're in business. It's four. Letting, having a little pause here. Good afternoon, I'm Roberta Longley, the Chair of the Climate Action Committee in Eastham. Very much appreciate this opportunity to tell you what we've been up to for really the last year and a half. My purpose tonight is to give you hopefully a brief update and overview of how as a committee we've, how we understand our role, and what we feel we've accomplished at this point, and where we're going, what we see as our goals. I actually have quite a few slides, I realize today, but I'm going to try to move pretty quickly so there'll be plenty of time for questions and conversation afterwards. We have seven members on our committee. As you can see, we have a full roster for our committee, which is great. There has been a lot of engagement and effort on the part of the people in our committee, on our committee. I'd say that the skills are very diverse, and there are a lot of interests, different interests relating to climate action, which I think has really promoted a great sense of teamwork and working together. We meet once a month, and what has been great is the support from the town. Jackie has been a wonderful liaison for us, as has Shayna, Shayna comes to our meetings, she sits for the entire time, which is unbelievable. And also want to thank Devin too, because Devin has, he's always there, calm, cool, collected at all our meetings, and that's really appreciated. Of course, we have a Climate Action Committee Charge, which is on the website, but we spent some time this past fall trying to think through what that really meant to us. So we came up with this goal statement. And essentially, I think it says is that we kind of see ourselves as wanting to be an informed advisor and a resource to the Select Board, relating to how the town determines to implement climate action in its policies and plans, as well as figuring out practices that the town and its residents can do to try to reduce our carbon footprint and to make plans in the potential consequences of climate change. We also see ourselves as an educational resource for the town, offering ways that individuals and businesses and neighborhoods and so on can adapt and mitigate climate change. The first year of our committee, there were actually, there were some of us who had never met each other because of COVID. Last summer, it really kind of changed. I think our first foray in terms of interacting with folks was at Windmill Weekend. We had a table, it was really interesting, a lot of interest on people's parts, not only to discuss climate change, but also hungry for information about how they can do their part in the fight against climate change, interest in solar, how they could include solar panels on their houses, how they could electrify their homes through heat pumps and so on. So it was very clear to us that there's a need for information out there. So one thing we were able to accomplish last fall, we had three different programs at the library, a lot of participation with that, and really started that interaction with people regarding climate change and climate action. We've, I think we're kind of building a climate community here in Eastham, which is kind of wonderful to see. We have 175 people who have given us their emails to learn about our events and so on. We have added a few things on the webpage, the Climate Action Page web page, to provide information to people about solar and so on and so forth. And what's very exciting is that Devin has created a YouTube channel of all of our programming. Yes, so you can find that on the webpage as well. Last fall, we went through an exercise together to, we had someone help us facilitate for us so we could kind of come up with some goals that we could agree on for the year 2023. So that was a very interesting exercise. This is just how we prioritized our goals, I won't go through it all, but we really were looking for ways that could make the biggest impact on what mattered the most, matters the most with emissions. And we were trying to find some near-term results that were measurable over a course of a year. And public awareness was part of it, and, you know, finding ways that we could collaborate with other organizations or whatever. So that was kind of how we started in establishing our goals. We also looked at so many of the actions that are taking place on the state and regional level with climate action. You are probably aware that Massachusetts now has a landmark law relating to climate in terms of having a goal of net zero emissions in this state by the year 2050, which is a very ambitious goal, and it's an entire roadmap for that. The Cape Cod Commission has created its own climate action plan, 200 pages, I'm on you. And it kind of outlines strategies for our region for how we can fight climate change. Plus, we always, of course, think through what's in the strategic plan relating to the goals of clean environment and resilient community. And finally, the declaration that a town meeting adopted back in 2020, declaring a climate emergency here in Eastham, and that Eastham was at risk, and that the town had to do whatever it could in the most feasible way to start moving towards net zero. As again, I don't want to take too much of your time this afternoon, but this is a kind of the directions, the areas that we decided to focus our goals on. And I'm going to go through them very quickly, so you get a sense of what we're up to on each one of these. In determining goals, we kept in mind this, I think, very important chart of, this came from the Cape Cod Commission. They did a greenhouse gas emission study on the Cape. And it's pretty clear where our greenhouse gas emissions are coming from, in terms of the large numbers. Transportation is 55%. And the other large piece is what they call stationary energy, but essentially, that's buildings. We live in a cold climate, so that is where we're using energy that is producing through fossil fuels, and that's what's causing a lot of the problem. So in relation to buildings in a lot of sense, solar is an important piece of this. And so our goal this year is to try to recommend options for residents and businesses in the town to adopt solar power and to improve grid resiliency. The way we're doing that is this fall, we expect to offer a solar workshop, probably at the library. And we will provide information for people, perhaps we will have people from the industry, the solar industry, to come and talk and to provide information of how people can make this happen for themselves, and even perhaps some tours of solar arrays in town for folks. That would include some written materials, and anyway, that's the plan for the fall. We also have a solar working group, and this is a group of five people, a couple people from our committee, but also volunteers who are interested in this subject. This may be a multi-year effort, but the idea is to see how Eastham, maybe working with other communities, could develop a real solar plan to increase the number of solar panels that are used in the town. And batteries as well, as that industry progresses. Same way with buildings, we're, the goal is to create awareness of the importance and the benefits of net zero standards for our future buildings and for our current buildings. We, again, would like to have a presentation at the library this fall on this topic. It's possible this might be a multi-town event. We are anxious to work with a lot of the towns around us on this topic. And actually, tomorrow night, we're going to be having a discussion with, from Orleans to Provincetown, representatives of climate folks in those towns, to see what we can pull together on that, that would be very exciting. One final piece on buildings, I just wanted to point out, is that the new climate law, Massachusetts' new climate law, has required the Department of Energy Resources to create what they call a specialized stretch code. And as you know, Eastham has the stretch code. That has recently been updated to create greater energy efficiency. But the specialized stretch code actually provides a path to net zero building in a community. Just, it's that one step further to net zero. And a town can adopt this specialized code, and our committee probably will be coming back to you in the fall to talk to you about that, about the possibilities of that. We also have had a nice relationship with the Recycling Committee, and there's been a subcommittee that has been working to try to encourage composting in the town. As many of you know, we have a composting station at the transfer station, which is, I think, a result of some of their encouragement to the town. That is great, and the subcommittee is also working on some education this spring to encourage people, to let them know that this exists, to teach them more about composting. That is part of their strategy, as well as hopefully planning for more research and consultation in the best compost systems for Eastham. What would be wonderful is if we could keep the composting here in Eastham, rather than sending it out, so we can have it, particularly have great advantage, the wonderful soil that results out of composting. I think that's the ultimate goal with that. Another piece is a goal relating to offering options and incentives to encourage low emissions transportation in Eastham. We are working on that in terms of issues and options on that. And I think we too will offer a public program on that in the fall relating to EVs and EV chargers. This is a goal that we included, only because it's half the, half the conversation with climate action. Right now, we have a goal to try to find ways that our committee can actively participate in town regarding this need to find ways to reduce the potential loss from storms, future storms and natural disasters. I know the town, we know that the town has done some excellent work on this regarding the hazard mitigation plan. I know there are other studies like the low-lying roads and the coastal management systems, it's the multi-system. All of that is wonderful work, and it's great that it's going forward. We're at this point just studying this to see what else can be done, and if there's something else we could recommend. And finally, there's a couple more things I wanted to share with you. We do have a lot of ambitions regarding community outreach. We have a goal of providing six public programs this year. We are making an effort to engage with youth and have had conversations with the NOSIT Green Club, High School Green Club, looking for a project that we could collaborate with them on. At this point, it's been a little challenging, and especially now with people graduating and changes, but we continue to make an effort on that end. We are seeking programs at the COA, we have one on composting, no, I'm sorry, not composting. A general conversation over coffee about climate action, that's scheduled for July at the COA. I think, also, we would love to be able to interact and involve that kind of, those middle generations, that, I call them the X's and the Y's. People who are very hard at work, very busy with their lives and their children, they care about climate. How can we engage them on this subject, and how can we get them involved? We also, various members of our committee have, are involved in this Outer Cape Climate Group, and also there's a Cape Cod Climate Action Network, which is a Cape-wide effort of climate volunteers. So I think that we're really, as you can see, trying to reach, reach out in all levels regarding climate. Finally, finally, we have a goal this year of seeing what we can do about a climate action plan for Eastham. plan for Eastham. Our goal right now is to work with the town and other interested stakeholders, we'll call them, to figure out ways that we could set actions to address climate change on kind of a more strategic framework, a detailed, that is what a climate action plan can be. It can really be a roadmap for how a town is going to attack climate change. A member of our committee, Tom McNellis, and I have been in contact with Steve Tupper, who is the deputy director at the Cape Cod Commission. And he's been, over the past six months, we've had some conversations with him. He's really been very helpful as we've been thinking through some of this, particularly about recommendations for the updated strategic plan. And fortunately, he has offered, well, he had brought it to our attention that there may be some money for Eastham to have a greenhouse gas emission inventory. And Shayna, back in February, she was very kind to be able to turn that, it was a proposal over, so that, you know, we could apply for the money. Unfortunately, it was a state grant that did not get through for the commission on that. But fortunately, another grant came up recently, and Eastham and Wellfleet have both been awarded to help them with their climate action. So, this is wonderful news, and we'll, over the course of this year, we should find out more about what the scope of that is. It's a consultant that will help Eastham, can help Eastham on that. All right, I know I've been rather long-winded on this, but it seemed that we were very anxious to share with you what we've been up to. And I just want to thank you for your time, and I'm thrilled that Eastham has found climate action something of a priority. And we know that we need to work both on mitigation and adaptation. Generally, it'll be wonderful if we can use these partnerships in these collaborations with our town, with all the other towns, and with the Cape, to see that, hopefully, become a really green community, we'll call, green communities, we'll call it. So, thank you, and here, if you have any questions?
Amy?
Yeah, I have one. Thank you very much, that was very comprehensive. Question about other towns, do other towns have climate action committees?
I think a lot of towns are working on it at this point. Many larger communities have them, and some communities, we've actually kind of reviewed a lot of the towns in Massachusetts, and there are plenty of towns that may be 15,000-plus that have many, many of the suburbs around, Boston, obviously, Cambridge, obviously, many of the suburbs, and smaller towns like Acton, population about 29,000, and Westboro, they have them. The smaller towns, not so much in Massachusetts, but everyone, many of the climate folks are talking about that and how to get that to happen. And every one of them seems to be doing it in their own fashion. That's why we're very happy to have the climate, the commission helping us with this, to direct us on that.
So they're working with all the towns on the Cape to try to get?
They are beginning to. I think that is part of their mission right now. They've created this wonderful plan, this 200-page plan, and part of that is-
I hope there's an executive summary.
That's right.
Good, good.
How are they going to-
Love those.
How are they going to trickle it down?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Jamie?
Yeah. Thank you for the presentation. You know, your group is definitely staying busy and doing a lot. I guess one of my, one of the things that's kind of been in the back of my mind with the climate action committee, kind of since day one, a few years ago, we passed the first plastics ban bylaw. And I think a lot of folks were kind of operated to help get that done. And it was always my thought that groups like the climate action committee was there for like a support structure with moves like that. Because when you make big change like that, it, that's the first step, the vote, right? Like, you vote, I want this big change, great. But you don't just drop it after that, right? Because now, all of a sudden, every small business in town has to change their products or change where they buy, you know, maybe down the road where they buy to-go containers or their forks and to-go stuff. I mean, we're, we are a to-go community. We have beaches, you know, and we struggle with that. And a lot of the small businesses who are like stretched thin, especially, you know, for half the year, don't have time to find these things. But now, this change is here. And so I had thought that some of what this group was going to be doing was providing resources to help transition these changes, resource lists with like product categories or places that businesses can buy these things, to help all these people who now find themselves in this new changing environment to get there. Because they want to do it, and they want to do the right thing. All of us want to do the right thing. But it's fiscally prohibitive and time prohibitive for a lot of these small businesses to do it. And so, I thought, I guess I had always been hoping to see some kind of like program come up to help support some of the businesses in town with some of these changes that we're asking of them. So that's one thing that I guess I, with, you know, I love the idea of solar panels, electric vehicles, all of these things are great, but they're kind of privileged changes that people get to make, right? Like, if I'm struggling to pay my rent and I'm working 60 hours a week, I'm not thinking about solar panels, you know? But I need to get new containers for the water bottles, because I can't sell them anymore. I need help with that. And so I think that that's a little bit of what the piece that I struggle with when I see this plan. I think that all of these things are valid and necessary, and we all need to be making these changes. I got solar panels last year. I'm lucky. I'm lucky I was able to. But I see other folks struggling with some of these really like, you know, they're not as like fun and exciting to talk about, right? But they're really Eastham-centric, and they're impacting our residents and our businesses. Just like educating tourists, right? Like, we see so much trash on our beaches, and we see people that don't know the rules, and they don't understand how fragile our ecosystem is. And so this idea, you know, of outreach for the folks that are visiting, to bring them up to speed when they're here for a week or two weeks, so that they know the why, why it's so important that we make these plastic bylaw changes, and why you should be caring about what you're buying at the stores, why you shouldn't go to, you know, Hyannis and buy a case of plastic water bottles from BJ's. Instead, maybe spend a little more when you're in town and buy from the small businesses, because here's what happens when you do that. You know, those are things that I think are so Eastham impactful, and that I, you know, I'm not saying that what you're doing isn't, but what I'm saying is sometimes the smaller impactful things are like where people struggle, where residents struggle. And so I would love to see, in addition to some of these bigger programs, some kind of like small, really like Eastham-centric.
Well, let me respond in two ways. First of all, your good point about the fact that so much of change relating to our buildings, solar and electrification of our homes, you're right, there are, it's, it can't be on the back of people who don't have the money to do this.
Yeah.
And I think that we're very aware of that. And I think that any kind of public outreach on that has to help be, include how we can make this affordable for people. Clearly, as you've been following, the federal government and the state government is making large investments in moving us forward into a green economy. And there are incentives that are out there. The word is not out there with people in terms of how you can make this possible and what your long-term savings are. And I think one thing that we could do in Eastham is make that information available to people, so that they can see that it's a positive, it's a plus for them in the end.
For a homeowner?
Well, it's-
Right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But it also, I think the country and the state has to start moving with not just homeowners, but everything. And it's not happening overnight, but it's got to happen. And it's got to be made affordable to people. There's what we call climate justice, it can't be on the backs of-
No, I mean, I absolutely agree with you. I just, I'm trying to kind of just, my job is to bring it back to the resident, right? And bring it back to Eastham, that's my job.
And to your other question, I think what you're proposing is a wonderful idea. We have worked with the recycling committee, for example, with this project with composting, which was an immediate project. It is something possible that there could be a combination of climate action, recycling people that work on the plastics issue, because clearly, it's needed.
Yeah.
And we saw this year that people want it, but how to make it possible is a whole different ballgame.
And I think that that, you know, that's where a lot of, I know the board's reluctance to pushing forward so quickly with a lot of change, we struggle, right? Because we're also responsible for these residents and these small businesses too that are already struggling with the first big change that came through. And so, in order to make these transitions easier, I always say like, okay, what can we do? You know, we have all of these committees, we have all these people that care, so how can we bring all that together to support the people that are here in Eastham trying to make these changes? Because it's not like they don't want to do the right thing for our ecosystem or for the Cape. It's just that they can't.
Need tools in their toolbox.
Yes, tools in toolbox, yes.
Yeah, well, that is absolutely something to consider in terms of developing a subcommittee on that, or a multi-committee, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'd like to say something?
Mike Sarcioni. So, I want to make a comment regarding our solar strategy. If we do it correctly, and we do it broadly enough, the marginalized in the town of Eastham would not pay a dime for electricity. Okay? So that's our goal. All right? Is to get enough residential, community, and municipal solar, such that the marginalized making an income less than our determination will not pay a dime for electricity. So, so it is a big deal town-wide. We are thinking about that, not just-
That I understand. Yeah, no, that I've, yeah, I've definitely heard conversation of that type of program, so it's nice to hear that you're tapped into that concept. Thank you. Thank you.
We have a number of people from our committee here.
So this, yeah, it's a chair, that everything goes through the chair for-
Yeah, so, sure, go ahead.
Can I do it from here?
Yes, I'd rather you come up here and name and address, please.
Address.
Sheriff Gale, Vice Chair, 40 Sauter Drive. It just, I think the big point, and we didn't, I don't think expressed it in our slide, is we are all very committed to economic justice. It comes up at every meeting, we're very aware of it. And so, it's not to minimize how it affects, like, I myself, I think about solar, about how am I going to afford it. My house, I have too many trees, I'm not going to take my trees down. But I'm learning that there's this community solar opportunity, and there's, so there's many ways for us to do it. And the whole thing with the plastic, I have to say, we were not the committee-
Yeah.
-that brought the plastic to the situation, nor are we the committee who brought the item to the town meeting this year. Do you know what I mean? We're very much with working together. We've identified, we know we need to reach out to businesses. What's the best way to do that? Is that through the chamber? Not, I mean, I've talked to the owner at Sam's, who's very educated about what's going on.
Yeah, she's great.
So when I hear about us spending our time trying to do that, I think maybe we need to partner with a business person who already has those, and in fact, they've already agreed to be on a committee to work on that item from town meeting. Do you know what I mean? And have a subcommittee. The one that got shot down, the petition.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean? And we are, I think there's some talk that that needs to, you know, come from there.
Yeah.
So, I think we're very aware, as we are citizens, it's not like we're outside people, and we are a diverse group. So I appreciate what you're saying, but I do, I think, for me, it's, how do we reach that group of hard-working people who are too tired to come out to our 6:30 workshops or on a Saturday? And we've talked about the concept, we're not there yet, so just, how do we build like a community ambassador, a neighborhood, like a neighborhood watch, but not a neighborhood watch? Where we have people in the neighborhoods who are helping each other move in the right direction. Not even the right, in a direction that works for them.
Yeah.
So, just, we do have all these conversations, but it's good to be reminded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think some of the ways you've been, you know, win the weekend out, those are great things, to be out and visible, and even consider going to like chamber meetings. I mean, they get a lot of the businesses, more have to go in the off-season, they, none of them come in the summer. So, the only ones that come in the summer are people who work in the winter. So.
That is the way, as we're saying, the generation Ys and Zs and so on, the other-
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, this is Jerry. I'm a liaison to the committee, and Roberta, thank you for the presentation. Jamie, they, the committee really worries about impact on the community, which is why I don't think they've brought forward their ideas on adopting the real, the expanded stretch goal, because they want to talk to builders and realtors to figure out what the impact would be upon the town and so forth. And I think they really are pushing and started working with the recycling committee, which I think is great. And we have to remember that the two plastic warrants, one to pass, one that didn't, were both petitioned warrants that came up through. And it's, these people on this committee are very committed to having the goals met, to put something through that will actually be implemented. So, I think that they're working there, and you get some great ideas for them, and I'm sure they'll go forward. But I just wanted to thank the committee for all the time that they've spent, and I look forward to learning about their results, working with builders, et cetera, and what may or may not come forward next. Thanks.
And thank you, Jerry. I'm sorry, I didn't thank you earlier, but you've been a great, great resource for us, and attend our meetings, and give us advice, and I can't tell you how valuable that is to us.
Okay, we'll take one more. Mary, you wanted to say something?
Mary Shaw, 850 Schoolhouse Road. And I just want to say that you talked about the composting availability at the transfer station, and I volunteer at the library on a regular basis, and I think that the folks in town are slowly learning about the whole composting availability there, and they're coming into the library and wondering where they can buy composting bags, whether we have them there, whether they're for sale. They've said they've been to Ace Hardware, they've been different places around town, and they, they don't know what to do and how to proceed to take care of their compost. So, I'm just wondering, I did send an email to Jackie about it, and there was something about a possibility, and I don't know if it was the grant that you mentioned earlier, of providing something for grant monies for helping the townspeople with their composting process.
Roberta, I'll take that one.
All right.
So, the grant I was speaking to you about, Mary, is a DPW Recycling Committee grant, and we had talked about it pre-town meeting, because I wanted to have the buckets to give out at town meeting. But we should be able to get some composting buckets, and, you know, they are available everywhere, but it would be nice if we could encourage people to do it by providing them a receptacle. So, we're working on that.
Oh, cool.
I just use a big yogurt container.
I know, that's what I usually use.
I find if you get a little too much of it, yeah. Because we compost all our fruits and vegetables at home, so this is really just the, you know, meat or cheese or things that we don't put in our home compost, and so that can turn rather quickly.
Yeah.
So I just use a yogurt container.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of positive feedback, feedbacks about the composting.
Yeah, they're filling out, they're filling out.
Just getting the word out.
Yeah.
And I think what we've talked about with the recycling committee, John Roughly and I, is the potential of trying to figure out when, if we're, if and when we move forward with wastewater and we're reconfiguring the DPW site, that would be the time to figure out if there's space at the transfer station to do a more sophisticated composting operation there.
Do the compostable containers and things like that.
That could be regional, which would be nice, so.
Great, cool, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Roberta, I appreciate the update.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, let's move on. The next topic is under Administrative Matters, the MOU for the Orleans wastewater.
So, this is a happy day. We've been meeting with the wastewater committee from Orleans, or I shouldn't say committee, it's their, a member of their- It's their, a member of their select board, the consultants, the town manager in Orleans for, I would say, close to a year now. And so this memorandum of understanding is just committing us to moving forward with some solutions that would help us jointly prepare for wastewater in our watershed, our town cove and Rock Harbor watersheds.
Do anybody have any questions?
The DEP is also thrilled to see it.
So we need a motion?
A motion and a signature, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum, memorandum, geez, memorandum of understanding between Orleans and Eastham in collaboration for the DEP watershed permits.
Second.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Jerry? Yes. Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. Do we have the document to sign?
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right.
In the signing folder. And I'll ask you to do two.
Do you need my signature on that? I'll be back, I can do it on Thursday, I think I can show up. No, I think it just needs one signature.
It just needs the chairman.
Oh, yeah, superpower art.
Yeah, this is an easy one. And then the second one is a memorandum of understanding with the, specifically with the Orleans Day Center. This was in the budget at town meeting, it passed through. We have $20,000 to pay a stipend to Orleans to accept our residents in their day center. Now that we do not have one, Orleans is the regional day center. And so it's a really well-run program and the COA is delighted to be able to offer that for our residents.
Great.
Any questions? This is adult, right?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions? All right, we'll need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU for the Orleans Day Center.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. Let's move on to the 100 Coal Road Conservation Restriction.
So we have many outstanding, oh, go ahead. Hi, Mark. Mark Robinson.
I haven't been here in person in a long time.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark Robinson, the executive director of the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts. And I'm here tonight to represent the Eastham Conservation Foundation, which is your local nonprofit land conservation trust, which is in the process of purchasing the acre property at 100 Coal Roads, run by five and a half acres of conservation restriction property, donated by the Doane family through the Marion Thomas and her husband Fred about 20, 25, 30 years ago now. And this is the final little piece. If you've received this map, you can see it's the little donut hole and this whole assemblage of open space running from the bay out to Great Pond. And the conservation trust was, the conservation foundation was, worked with the Community Preservation Committee this year. And the town meeting approved a $50,000 open space grant to help preserve this property. So we're, we've now have a conservation restriction, which is required under the Community Preservation Act to safeguard the town's interest in the property and is required by the state. And this is a restriction that has been approved by the state, by the foundation, and by your conservation commission. We're here tonight to get the final approval locally from the town select board. And then we'll send it to Boston to have the Secretary of Environmental Affairs sign it, so get it done this month, we hope.
Thank you. Questions?
No, that's good to me.
Okay, can I get a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve the conservation restriction for 100 Coal Road.
I'll second it. Any discussion? We'll vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye. We got it.
And I'm an aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you, do you need signatures on that page?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll be in on, on Thursday. I'll be in on Thursday morning to, is that where I should go?
We just need a, Mr. Chair, we just need a majority, if we could...
Because you want to get it in as soon as possible.
Jerry doesn't mind, I could take it back tonight.
I don't mind.
Okay.
I don't mind.
We'd like to get it to Boston tomorrow, if possible, and I'll get a copy for you.
Okay, so we'll move on while that is going through the signatures. The next topic is the search committee funding request.
If we don't have anyone here, I could speak to it.
That'd be great.
So the search committee has been working on making a brochure to put around town. And it's going to be a trifold and they would like some money to pay for the printing.
That is a great idea.
We will also offer to help with that if they would like, because we have a color printer.
Oh, so we can just make them internally?
In-house.
Or we could send them out, whichever.
Is that what it's totally for? Just for the brochure?
Yes.
So we could print that.
Yeah, so to print it, to print it so it can be distributed. And I think they, does it say in the email?
How many copies do they want?
You know, that's so funny because they were just discussing it.
They have an amount of 250, but they don't see a...
Oh, they discussed it.
Say up to 250.
Their last meeting. I don't remember.
Well...
If we just say up to 250 for the, specifically for the printing of these items, that should, and if it's less, it's...
I also have a bunch of brochure paper in my office if they'd rather do that. It's already folded, it's super easy.
Yeah, we have a folding machine.
So maybe we should...
Can we have someone, a representative from the search committee maybe reach out or to Kayla to...
And it doesn't matter to us, it'll come out of our budget anyway.
Yeah.
So it's fine, we'll work with them.
So why don't we make the motion up to 250 and then leave it to the search committee as to whether they'd like to do us in-house or send it out?
And then I guess it also says purchase display holders.
Where would they need them? Yeah, I mean, the library already has them, you know, the town hall has them.
Well, would you like a motion? I move we approve the funding request for the search committee in the amount of $250.
Second.
Okay, any discussions?
I don't think so.
All right, Jerry, vote?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay.
Suzanne, do you want to reach out to someone from them to about maybe just chatting with Kayla to let us know what the final decision is, if they're going to be?
Yes.
Or even if you just send a group email.
I think there's an email that we're both on that we can...
Just like a group email, just to get that. Cool.
Because I have some brochures from the police department, they actually turned out really nice.
Yeah, so yeah, maybe just do a group email.
You probably get them quicker, too. Yeah. Okay, transient vendor permit for Serendipity.
I'll make a motion to approve transient vendor permit for Patricia Kelly with Serendipity.
I'll second that.
Where is, this is for a windmill green activity? Yes.
Like the dog collars from the last one, remember?
Yeah.
Maybe go get Meadow one.
Yeah, as Meadow's birthday present for Martin.
Yeah, it's in September.
Okay, let's vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Amy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Aye, I get confused.
It's not as easy as it looks, right?
I get confused.
It is confusing.
Okay, committee appointments and resignations. First is the zoning board of appeals for Robert Brunz and Martin Ridge. Robert Brunz is going for another term. Martin Ridge is being moved up to full from an alternate, I believe.
Resignation. Craig.
So I will make a...
Oh, it's not on here.
It says appointments in, it doesn't say the name on the...
They're in our packet, though.
But it's in the packet.
Okay.
It just says resignation, yeah.
This is as a result of resignation, okay. I'll make a motion that we approve Robert Brunz and Martin Ridge.
Second.
And we also accept the resignation of Kay Mary Craig.
Second again.
Okay, any discussion? All right, let's vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. Human Services Advisory Committee, Diane Matfeld.
I'll make a motion to appoint Diane Matfeld to the Human Services Advisory Committee.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
I'll just say I was at the meeting. She was, she had a great discussion with the chair, had already, I think she had attended a meeting, read the charge. She was familiar with everything, is going to be here all through the winter, so was able to attend all the meetings, so, yep.
Okay, any discussion? Vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, the reappointment of Mary Shaw to the Finance Committee.
Do we have to do that or does that Scott's appointment?
No, that's Scott's. I think that's just notification.
Just to inform us.
Letting us know.
So we don't have to approve that?
No.
Congratulations, Mary.
You're stuck with us again.
Now, while we're talking about that, we are, we have a, we have an appointment on, for the Finance Committee. And we've gotten, one, one application is on its way in, okay? So I'll set up the interview and then we can talk about that, okay?
Okay.
Great.
All right, next one is to appoint Kevin Gatlin to the planning board. He's going on as an alternate. I sat in the interview with Kevin. He's got a very, very strong banking background. He's going to bring some good stuff to that committee.
Isn't he on the zoning task force, too?
He was on the zoning task force, yes. He was on the zoning task force.
Yep.
And he's not interested in the Finance Committee?
He's interested in the planning board.
I think probably from all the...
Yeah, the zoning stuff that he does.
Yeah, yep.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kevin Gatlin to the planning board. Second.
Any discussion? We'll vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.
He used to look at us.
And we've done the resignation.
It's hard.
I'm confused. I'm sorry I'm so dumb.
Oh, the resignation was at the bottom.
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was in there. But we just, we did it already.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is going to be a dumb question. Are you an administrator or are you a manager?
I am a town manager and I'm sorry because I do my own report and it's in the...
See, Jerry yelled at me because I wrote that letter to Maddie and I put town administrator. He sent me a nasty note, said, "You dummy, she's a manager, not an administrator."
Very sorry.
This is both on here.
It was not a nasty, it was not nasty. Did you tell me it was Kevin?
I think so. I think it was my fault. I don't know where I came up with Kevin.
I don't know where you got Kevin.
None of us do.
She's setting you up, Art. She's setting you up.
Oh my God, that's terrible. I would never do that.
No, I know. So it's town manager. All right, okay, so we're going to go to the town manager report.
Town manager.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of things. I don't have a lot this week, but they're big, right? So the first thing is that I just received today in the mail, the final draft of our watershed management plan.
Oh, wow.
So we're going to be reading this. It's nice. It's not quite as much as the commission, but it's very detailed and that'll be exciting. So it's finally done, so we'll probably be meeting with Jane and the committee and the board just to walk through what the next steps will be. And I've got to get the charge ready this month for the capital projects committee so that we can start that in the fall and...
So once we go through this, it then gets submitted to the state?
That's, the next step is that it goes to the DEP and then we spend probably a year trying to permit it through the DEP and answering all their questions and that's when the real design of the systems happen.
That's great.
So, yeah, we're on our way. And coupled with, we went to, we went to a grant ceremony last week because the town of Eastham was awarded $381,375 from Barnstable County for our Outer Cape Behavioral and Public Health Consortium. And we're really, really proud of that. Hillary Greenberg-Lemos, our new health agent, I'm sorry, our new Director of Health and the Environment, will be coming to you at your next meeting, the 26th?
Yeah, I think it's 26th.
To talk about that and the assessment that she's asking permission to do in this packet as well. But we're really excited. All four towns were represented. It was a nice ceremony and we've done some good press on it, so.
Well, this is, we haven't done a flash on this, have we?
No, we did a formal press release on Friday, Friday morning.
Okay.
This is, it takes a little longer because we have to run it by all three other towns.
It really hits about three or four of our strategic goals.
Yes.
And one of the things it hits is an action item we've had on our goals for a long time is to work with other towns for resources. So that's super.
It is. It is. And it really is, I mean, we give credit to the four towns' health agents and it really was, they have carried this ball for a very long time without much support. So it's very exciting for us to be able to support them and build a framework for this to work and be sustained over time. And so we're getting the ARPA grant with the hopes that the four towns will pick up this service in the next, you know, the grant goes from 18 months to two years after that, that we would maybe pick up the cost of this in our budgets and move forward with it.
So do you think it'd be one person sort of roving between towns that would provide these services or...
I think we're, we don't know yet because we do have to procure them, right? So we have to go through a procurement process. And we're hoping that several agencies that have a presence on the Outer Cape, of course, will apply. And the framework for behavioral health that's working really well for us is the Navigator Program out of Outer Cape Health. And so there are already in our area three navigators. So this would provide maybe another step down from the Navigator Program where if someone needed some behavioral health services for a longer period of time or in a different way than what Navigator's already providing. So we're going to build on the framework that's already there. But it'll definitely be more than one human. And nursing as well. It'll be more than one person for the four towns.
We had talked really just privately about, you know, Harwich had had a person in their town hall, a psychologist, that anyone under 18 could come.
Yep.
Talk to for free.
Yep.
And boy, I can't think of a better, you know, these kids are struggling.
I think they really are and I think it would be, yeah, great. And they're also, this same consortium is doing teen drop-ins every Wednesday and they revolve around through the four towns, too. So there's a lot of different programs in this umbrella, which I think you'll, again, we'll be bringing some presentations for you to see. The other thing we are thinking about is we do have the vacant space at Town Center Plaza right now. And we would like to do some minor renovations of that. We just need a window repair, some AC, and maybe new carpeting to make that one of their drop-in sites in...
Bike shop, is it?
Yeah, where the bike shop was. And have the coordinator for this project be on site there. So it is, it's taking shape, I think. It's going to be very exciting, I think. And then you are, we are, we have a Board of Water Commissioners meeting scheduled for you and we're on our last, last contracts of the water system. Who would have thunk it that we would be here at this moment? And even though the tank bid did come in over budget, we are still a full $9 million under, under the appropriation nearing the end of the project, so. Yeah, to us. Yeah.
That's good.
Yep.
Okay. Other business and correspondence, I guess we need to reappoint you to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board?
So moved.
Have a second? Is there any discussion? I mean, did you want to be reappointed?
I do. This is a very important appointment, yes.
We'll vote. Jerry?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, new and upcoming items, are there any?
I have one.
Sure.
One thing. I had, I've been hearing from a couple residents about questions regarding, and I briefly talked to Jackie about this, too, the expanding of the childcare voucher program for ages to one month to four years. I guess this is going on now, and Roughly and True have done it recently. It comes, you know, kind of at the request mixed in with like concerns about RTE, all of those things, right, like what's going to be the most impactful tool moving forward for the town of Eastham, so I thought, I don't know if it's something we want to put on as a future agenda item, or to think about alongside RTE when we get to that point, when we have our discussion again, but I do view both as tools, and so I don't know how, you know, if we want to just kind of talk about the expansion of the childcare voucher separately or something like that, something to consider.
I think we should talk about it separately.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the sooner we address it, the better, rather than wait.
Okay.
Till the beginning of the next year, so, we get that on an agenda?
Yes, and Kayla's pulling together the data, the census data, so we know how many under threes we have, because we do, we do three, four, and of course kindergarten for five, so it's really 2.9 and under is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The other thing is, we do have $100,000 in the family support program that was for school food, so food for school, so what I was going to do is, once we get the numbers of how many kids, we can figure out, we may be able to do something sooner rather than later because of that.
Just get that left over, because food lunches recovered for a couple of years.
Covered by the state, by the federal, yeah.
And it looks like they're going to pick them up, so.
The state's going to continue to do that.
That's what we've heard, yeah.
Oh, so now that money could go back into.
So that money might be available, I guess, is what I'm saying.
That would be a much better setup, yeah.
And the other question I had, Jackie, you mentioned something about the state potentially offering some type of sliding scale program?
It's called, oh gosh, Project Start something, it's not Head Start, but it's, there is, there's a bill before the legislature, it was supposed to pass last July, but they broke, it did not get passed before the break in the session, so it's back on this congressional session, so we're hoping, obviously, that it'll get passed this spring, I mean, this June. It is a comprehensive childcare package statewide that would be on a sliding scale, so it might not totally replace what we have, but it would definitely, we would be able to spend less resources because we'd be subsidizing an already existing program.
So I was going to say, would that subsidize the town, then?
Yes.
Oh, that's fantastic.
I think it directly, it's one of those programs that people would apply directly to.
Right, so we'd have less people.
We'd have less people, or we would be able to just do the difference between what they're paying and what people need.
Oh, that's great.
So I am keeping my eye on that, that's an excellent, you know, piece of legislation, and everyone seems to support it, so I'm hoping that it will move forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, I have one question. Jackie, last meeting, you mentioned the state maybe giving the North Carolina Regional School System an additional $7 million for the high school project, is that gone through yet, or is that still being considered, or whatever?
We're on the list, I'm not sure the Massachusetts School Building Authority has actually taken the vote to, to split up the money, they have $100 million, and it's going to be split between the 19 projects that were funded last year and came in over budget.
Oh, good.
Okay. Okay, yes.
Chair, is there an opportunity for guests to comment today? And I apologize, I missed that at the beginning.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Guest comment.
Is there an opportunity for guests to comment today?
Sure. Name and address.
I'm Tom McNellis, Cooks Brook Road, and in addition to being supporting the Climate Action Committee, I'm the Eastham rep, I'm your rep for the Cape Light Compact.
Oh, yeah.
So I just wanted to give you just a two-minute update on a couple key pieces that have happened recently, last week.